Good evening. I will call to order the February 4th, 2021, regular meeting of the Hendersonville City Council. We begin our meetings with a silent invocation for people to pray or meditate as they choose, followed by the pledge allegiance to the flag. So if you will rise with me, please. If you'll join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation of liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Big seated. City Councilmember Jerry Smith and City Manager John Connet are both participating via Zoom this evening. So since Mr. Smith is not here, we will have to take all of our votes by. We have two, three, four, five, six, seven people signed up for public comment here in person. Is there anyone on the Zoom call that wishes to have public? This is general public comment at the beginning. If so, please raise your hand, indicate in some fashion, so I know how many people wish to speak. And staff will kind of watch and see if anybody requests that. Anyone up here too who's wishing to speak?
Not found here.
Okay. Then we will go just with the list we have here. And we have seven people lined up. That means that everyone will have two minutes. And it did kind of get away from me last time, so we will be trying to be a little more conscious of our time this evening. First of all, is it Kathy Unista? Urista?
Hi, Ms. Anderson.
Yes. If you would give your name and your address for the clerk's record, please. We do have a, we're trying to keep up with our time. So our Assistant City Manager will have a card saying when the time is up. So you will have two minutes. And please introduce yourself.
So this is Anna? Okay, guys. So hi, my name's Kathy Ursta. I live at 103 Yellen Betty's Place, Hendersonville. And I want to thank you for letting me speak. I'm here representing a growing, rapidly growing number of people around the town, around the county, around the state, around the whole country, around the world. I'm here because, isn't that as, I'm here because I, like everyone in this room, want Hendersonville to thrive. Isn't that you as our city council, the commissioners, the mayor, and the sheriff's responsibility to protect our constitutional rights and assist in creating a thriving community? I come here with questions and good news. There is no longer a declared health emergency in this county. The city website stated it ended May 11th, 2020. Knowing that, I ask these questions. So if that's true, why are we still under restrictions? If you still feel there are some degree of emergency, wouldn't it make sense to show some evidence to back that up? Do you have fact-based evidence that SARS-CoV-2 exists? I have done a whole lot of research and found none. Where is your evidence? Can you show us any fact-based evidence that masks are effective and protect people from the spread of the virus? Where's that evidence? You have, are you aware that Pfizer pulled their vaccine a biological agent? Are you aware that the CDC just has confessed that the PCR test is a 96% failure? Aware that CDC confessed about 1,600% inflation rate to the numbers? The good news is, I have, I gave a dossier to Jerry Smith, I think it's in his folder, which is a 205-page dossier that shows, that was written by Dr. David Martin, who lives south Carolina, and it's available to the general public. And believe it or not, I was stunned to find out that this dossier documents and exposes Dr. Anthony Fauci, the CDC, WHO, along with pharmaceutical companies, of criminal activities related to COVID viruses and vaccines. There's 5,100-plus documented patents related to this criminal activity. But wait, aren't those the people and agencies most of us trust and listen, listen to about health-related?
Thank you. Our, the two minutes is up. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, Carolyn, this is Weaver. And again, if you could give your name and address for the clerk's record, please. And we have two minutes, and there will be a sign over here when the time is up.
Thank you. My name is Carolyn Weidner. I reside at 1235 Ransier Drive in Hendersonville. I've resided in Hendersonville for 20 years. I'm from Boone, North Carolina originally, so I am a native of western North Carolina. I am familiar with the dictates from Raleigh a long time ago, the historical dictates. I'm here tonight to bring your attention to a document that was signed by more than 43,000 public health officials and policy analysts of public health. It's called the Great Barrington Declaration. It is a sensible and compassionate strategy in the COVID times. They have a long provenance as far as education and policy matters go. And they point out the inaccurate on the WHO in their original estimates. And they also point out how policy has not changed, even in light of those inaccurate estimates. The website for this document, if you're interested, is GB, that's G is in gray, B is in void, They focus on the fatalities and the death rates from the lockdowns. This is what the document is primarily about. And I'll just give you one instance of the statistic that starvation is going to be exacerbated by 136 million people this year because of the economic damage. Children are not getting their vaccinations for school because of fear of COVID. Cancer victims are not coming in for their cancer treatments because of the fear of COVID.
Thank you. The two minutes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Deion Jackson?
Hey, 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 hey. All right, so.
And you know, name and address, please.
All right. Deion Jackson. My address is Austin, Mountain Road, Pennsylvania, line 2, 8792. So I'm not here to mask, but you guys know that I am here to talk about systemic racism and how we can combat it. So we're going to focus on the budget this time, right? So I was looking at the budget, and there are some, it's two things that worry me. Main Street budget versus Seventh Avenue budget, right? So if you look at the budget, Main Street budget is about $500,000, $509,553 compared to the budget set aside for Seventh Avenue, which is showing as, the expenditure is showing as $102,256. Now, that looks unfair at that level. But then you look at the revenue, and so someone like me can say, that's unfair. But then, you know, whoever came up with the budget can say, no, if you look at the revenue, it's actually fair because Main Street gets $400,000, $472,000, $410 in revenue, and Seventh Avenue is about $75,000 in revenue. If you look at what your total input you end up spending after the expenditures and revenue, Main Street is still getting $10,000 more in the budget as opposed to Seventh Avenue. It shows the final budget left. It's $37,143 for Main Street and $27 for Seventh Avenue. A few of you have taken up racial equity training, a few of you refuse to or may be just not interested yet, but hopefully you will be. But anyways, so you understand that historically, black, anything black, black colleges, black neighborhoods, has always been underfunded. This is a prime example of that continuing. I just hope that we can do something about that. Hope y'all have a good day. Thank you very much. Happy Black History Month.
Jessica Stafford. And if you could give your name and address for the clerk's record, please.
Thank you. I'm Jessica Stafford, 408 Dear David Lane.
There will be a sign when the two minutes is up.
Okay.
And or get one.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, for the opportunity to speak in favor of lifting restrictions. I appreciate the previous speakers giving back speakers, whippings, and everything. I'm just going to give you a little bit of personal testimony. I work for a business that requires me to travel frequently. Ever since February, I've been on a plane and flying all around our great country just about on a weekly basis. It has given me a unique perspective on these lockdowns happen around the country. And I think that it is no mystery that it is a great, you know, burden economically, especially for people who might be living paycheck to paycheck and not as fortunate as the rest of us. So I would urge you to have some common sense about this if you're on the fence or thinking about voting against it. I think that rest in the immune system that God Almighty gave all of us, regardless of whether we worship Him or not, and with these restrictions and get back to living life in liberty and in the pursuit of happiness, and think that Hendersonville, this city, could be an example to places all around the, you know, western North Carolina, the state, and as well as the country, and an example to the world about reopening Hendersonville, North Carolina. Thank you for this opportunity. Appreciate it.
And Anne Marie McCordle?
Yes.
And if you could give your name and address officially for the clerk's record. And we have two minutes, and there will be a sign when the time is up.
And yes. Now, I only have a few words to say, so if I can give my time to the next speaker, I'd be happy to do that if it's okay with you guys. If not, that's fine. So Anne Marie McCordle is my name, 1235 Ransier Drive. I have been living in Hendersonville for 10 years. I'm actually from Ireland originally, and I love Hendersonville. And I've really just come to tell you one story about a friend of mine whose mom is quite old, who used to be part of the choir in church. And since she hasn't been able to go to choir practice and be with her community, her mental health had considerably, from not really being able to be on her own, and a couple months ago, she was really blind. So I just came to sort of say, you know, I think the mental and emotional impact on community is huge, and I don't really believe it's necessary. So I'm asking you just to please have compassion, and I'd like you to, as you said, the churches encourage them to. So thank you for your time. Thank you, Mr. Stafford.
Bobby Rowland?
Thank you so much for this opportunity to speak. My name is Bobby Rowland. I own Hendersonville. I've been here for 10 years, from South Florida, originally from Long Island, New York. And I love this community very much. I'm going to live the rest of my life. Concerned about, we can all see restaurants operating at 25%. And I love Main Street. I don't want to see them go out of business. And it's not just the visible restaurants. It's all small businesses are being threatened because there's a cabal elite that I think many of you must know about that are running the plant. They own all the money. They can print up all the money they want. And if you're not in the big boy club, call it the elite, call it the power structure, whatever you want to call it, then you're in trouble. They want Amazon, Walmart to be making all the money and crushing all of us. The churches, I have a friend who said, someone tested positive for COVID in the church, so they closed the church down for four months. Nothing would make the cabal happier than to impoverish all of us. And we have to fight back. One minute left. Thank you. Okay. So we have facts. If you follow the facts, COVID is no more than a flu virus. It's 99.97% of the people fine, they get it. If you could believe the PCR test, the man who invented it said it could never be used to test for virus. There's so much like this. Robert Kennedy talking to two million Germans in the street saying, we know it's a hoax. 640 doctors in Madrid, Spain, representing tens of thousands of doctors throughout Europe saying, we know it's a hoax. All of them. And I'd like to send you all, if I could have permission, just some links where you can start getting this correct information. So often, I grew up with my friends would like to go around to the restaurants and the main streets and say, here's a piece of paper. You do not have to close. They don't have to wear masks. Masks do four things. They stop the oxygen, they stop, they, too much carbon dioxide, and the micro bacteria back into you and all the children wearing it.
The two minutes is up.
And they're difficult to mask.
And you can go on the city's website, and there's a link to all the city council members.
Emails.
You can email.
Well, thank you so much. And I hope we have private communication. We're always open to questions. And we'll do anything we can to help the city and the churches.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
And Rafael Morales?
Hello, everyone. Rafael Morales. My address is 84 Toms Park Circle. My address is 84 Toms Park Circle. My address is 84 Toms Park Circle. And I'm here today to acknowledge that city members have shown exemplary leadership, and I'm very proud of you. And I'm especially proud of last summer in the name of Black History Month, whenever you participated in a march solidarity of Black Lives and our nationwide stigma and tragedy of police brutality. And at least those of you that participated committed to participate in working towards more equitable practices in our community. And I was hoping to acknowledge an agenda item here today that we're going to be discussing. It's an improvement to our city operations assembly room. I'd invite you all to be critical of the line items on this assembly room improvement. There's been no doubt, significant amount of homework there, but I would just be critical as you used to of the cost of some of these line items, and maybe be critical of this The budget for that improvement is totaling $126,000. The Seventh Avenue MSD Fund in fiscal year 2021 budget is $102,000. That's a 123% expenditure of the entire budget allocated for the Seventh Avenue MSD Fund. So I was here today to say that city council members truly are committed to participating and improving the systemic issue of racial inequity. What has changed since last summer? What have you done? How is anything different? And as we sit here today and we navigate expenditures and private commercial expansion here, and as we celebrate the growth of our community, are we remembering those that we too often forget in these conversations and folks that we've left behind? Thank you.
Thank you. We will go now to consideration of the agenda. Is there anything that anyone would like to add to the agenda or have removed from the agenda?
Madam Mayor, I can stop for a second. We did have, during the public comment, we did have somebody who seemed to raise their hand as well.
Did they do it before public comment started?
They did not. They did during.
Okay. Now, we can't keep having people jump in. If they want to speak, they are going to have to indicate it at the very beginning, as I said.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry. We did that last time, and it just got out of hand. All right. Consideration of the agenda. Anything anyone would like to have added to or removed from the agenda that you have before you this evening?
Mayor Rowland, this is John.
Yes.
I would like to remove item nine, V. Nine V.
Nine. B is the property trade?
Yes, ma'am. We can remove that from the agenda.
Right. Anything else? Or if not, a motion to approve the, to approve the agenda with that one, the Elisha?
Madam Mayor, we approve the agenda. Pass.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Not? We will do a roll call on this for, with that one amended. All right, Mr. Miller, you made the motion?
Aye.
Okay. Ms. Hensley?
Aye.
Ms. Simpson?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
And Mayor votes aye. So we have our agenda for this evening. Consent agenda. Is there anything anyone would like to have moved from the consent agenda to the regular agenda so it can be discussed? Or if not, a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda?
Madam Mayor, we approve the consent agenda.
Now, is there any discussion? Not? We will vote on approving the consent agenda. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Ms. Hensley?
Aye.
Ms. Simpson?
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. So the items on the consent agenda have been approved. We have some presentations of our MVPs. Mr. Connet, are you going to lead this for us?
Yes, ma'am, ma'am. Thank you. Mayor Rowland, members of city councils, my pleasure to recognize our quarterly MVPs for the months of October through December of 2020. Our MVPs are employees gone above and beyond call of duty, have really exemplified our service excellence program, providing great customer ship of service and professionalism among our employees. Our first nominee is Scott Shervan. He's at the waste water treatment plant. Scott is one of, Scott's one of our, he's our lab supervisor, at least for a few more days, and he's actually retiring at the end of the month after many, many years with the city. But Scott would recognize, one of our OSHA consultants requested a copy of the chemical hygiene plan from the lab at the waste water treatment plant. A company is working with me to get some samples and send the plans from Yale, Harvard, and Cigia, Pennsylvania. So Scott is to be commended for reaching the highest level of work in this field, and well done. We'd like to recognize Scott with great professionalism and great job with city. Our second quarterly MVP is Tammy Lepford. Tammy works in our Public Works Department. There have been, never been an instance where Tammy has not gone above and beyond to help our department. This is from a fire department issue. She's always kind, helpful, and efficient. She follows through, is sure any kind of repair or fix that is needed to maintain our safety and make our building just taken care of as quickly as possible. We appreciate her very much. Thank her for the hard work. That came from the internal nomination from one of our other departments. We're thanking Tammy for working with him. And then finally, our final group of quarterly MVPs is Brendan Shannon and Travis Penlin. Brendan and Brendan and Travis are responsible for the city receiving almost $2 million in grants through the French Pond River NPO, $376,000 in grants through the North Carolina Parks Recreation Fund, grant applications of beyond their normal tasks. So basically commended that they were able to complete other work and quickly put together successful application. Brendan has managed grant application process with such extreme professionalism and high level of detail that all residents benefit from it. And then Travis's maps and key components of grant processes. Thanks to Brendan and Travis for our support. These are our four quarterly MVPs. So I congratulate them and thank them for a job well done.
Congratulations to all of them. We appreciate our employees, especially those who go above and beyond. And then next, we have our MVP of the year.
Yes, ma'am. Hi, employees. In 2020, we had 154 employees nominated for MVP awards. In each award, three were chosen as quarterly MVPs. From these, the Service Excellence Design Team selected Daria Denal as MVP of the Year for 2020. And this is how, this is what she did to be recognized. She responded to a call of Namester Properties. Officer realized the juvenile experiencing a mental health crisis once transported or even unable to make contact with the family. Officer Denal, off duty, was able to contact the mother and other person in situation. Following the incident, Officer Denal spent a considerable amount of time working with the juvenile and the family to seek for a retreat. The juvenile needed to be transported to Mission Hospital in Asheville, but was unwilling to ride with anyone except Officer Denal. Officer Denal immediately responded in her personal vehicle and not only transported the juvenile to Mission State with him and his family, but he was in it. Officer Denal went above and beyond, leaving the family, helping family crisis, obtained a care label. So we recognize Daria, and she'll receive a $500 gift, and be named as our MVP of the Year. So congratulations to Daria for a great job, and we're very proud of her.
Thank you. That certainly was well deserved, and we appreciate the work that she does in general, and especially that incident. All right. We will go on then to our public hearings. The first public hearing is for the Cedars 227, Seventh Avenue West, a conditional zoning And Mr. Alway, you're going to lead this presentation.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. So as you noted, Mayor, this is the, we're calling it the Cedars Resort Project. Go ahead and head to the next slide, please. Thank you. Relying on Laura back there to help me with my slides. Thank you, Ms. Pro. So a little project background, high level. The pins involved in this project, there are four. You'll see them there on the left, 956879, 0293, 9568792254, 9568793224, and 9568790388. The existing zoning at those locations is CMU, central mixed use. And the proposed zoning in this case is CMU, central mixed use, conditional zoning district. The total acreage of the four parcels comes to just shy of two and a quarter acres. And the proposed use is a combined use of residential condominiums and hotel resorts. There were also included with the resort component of the project, restaurants and conference facilities. Next slide. So a couple of highlights. The project involves some rehab and construction. The rehab is to the Cedars, which is an existing just over 15,000 square foot historic hotel facility. And then there are two additional six-story structures being And then there are two additional six-story structures being added to the site alongside of the Cedars project. There's an atrium then connecting the three buildings. And you see some of the square footage is associated with each there. There are a total of 132 condo hotel suites in the two towers. Forty-eight of those include a lockout, so if you were to look at the floor plan, there's basically, as a component of the primary condominium, a lockroom that looks like a hotel room. And then including the tenant hotel rooms in the Cedars is a total of 180 potential rooms in the facility. The chariot, there are two residential buildings and a number of sheds on the site which are proposed for demo. You see the proposed parking count, which does meet or exceed the requirements for hotel, residence, and restaurants, basically. The traffic impact analysis was required and was conducted, and you see there are streetscape design standards which apply to CMU. We'll talk a little more about this moving forward. Next slide, please. This is an overview of the existing zoning at the property. The purple there is our CMU central mixed use district, so the property is surrounded by central mixed use. To the west, you start to get into the MIC, Medical Institutional Cultural District, and then C1 associated with Main Street is about a block away. Next slide. These two maps show existing land use and the site's location on a future land use map from the 2030 comprehensive plan. So the existing land use just representing what other activities are in the surrounding area. The, and I'll talk a little more about that moving forward, but there's a mix, a small mix of residential and commercial to the north and the south, commercial and cultural to, and institutional to the west, and cultural to the south, and commercial primarily to the east. The future land use map shows the urban institutional with adjacency to downtown support and the downtown port, future land uses. Next slide. So, in terms of comprehensive plan consistency, this site is identified in the 2030 comprehensive plan as a part of a priority, and there are, and is as a site within the urban institutional future land use. You can see a couple of the recommended future land uses there, including structured or underground parking and multifamily residential as a secondary use. The development standards are similar to downtown port and involve streetscape design elements, traffic calming and things along those lines, which you notice there in the strategy and development guidelines. Just a couple of the highlights, I know you all are familiar with this, but the Henderson High School is one block to the north, the Catholic school, the McLaughlin Catholic School is adjacent to the property to the west. There are cultural uses, including the Catholic Church to the south, commercial uses to the east. The project site is located just outside of Main Street Municipal Service District. The district ends at the corner of Seventh and Church Street, and the party campus is just two blocks to the west of the site. Next slide, please. This is a site plan for the property, for the project. This is showing on the interior, the garage levels, so which you're seeing inside the two larger structures is the garage level. I know the developer also has slides that show additional levels, including some of the condominium floors. And you can also see the general layouts and parameters of the atrium, existing hotel structure. There are entrances and driveways to the two towers and the associated garage off of Church Street at the corner of the Autobell property, and then there is a drive entering the garage at Buncombe, which you can see on the north western corner of the property. And there is a sort of a pull-through drop-off that is an entrance at the Cedars off of US 64. And for the US 64 Seventh Avenue entrance and for the Church Street entrance, they will be pursuing a DOT driveway approach. Next slide, yeah, thank you. So, the planning board did take this up at their December regular, December meeting, they did vote unanimously to recommend City Council adopt an ordinance amending as a subject parcel of CMU CZD based on the site plan submitted and on a series of conditions. The conditions are fully outlined in the staff report. An overview is provided of the conditions and the nature of each. In terms of staff's ongoing review of the conditions and the developers' efforts to meet those, we do believe that can do three, which are related to the met, are being met at a schematic level, and will continue to work with the move towards final site plan development to confirm that those are being met. The conditions four through five are associated with the traffic impact analysis, and Randy Kemp has submitted an amendment to their original traffic study, which our consultant is reviewing. The amended plan does include the parking, off-site parking as a component of the design, which was condition number six. Seven through eight, the conditions associated with streetscape improvements along the Church Street corridor have been addressed by the developer, and staff believe that the intent of those conditions has been met with the design and changes that they have made. And then condition nine was regarding certification on tree preservation in, on the site plan, and developer has worked on that condition sufficiently, and the planning board requested that we include a dark sky compliant lighting condition, which the developer agreed to at the planning board meeting. Next slide. So, the last two slides here, slide 10 and 11, were not heard by the planning board. Well, planning board was aware that the CMU district has a, what I would call a height bonus for residential property. The height limit within the CMU district is 36 feet, unless there are three floors of residential property included in, or three floors of residential included in the, whatever the project may be, in which case the height restriction goes to 64 feet. This project doesn't, the developer does not plan to have individual floors dedicated entirely to residential, and so they have proposed and worked with staff to develop a condition which defines how we would assess residential. So this is something that, you know, we're, I'm obviously calling this when I was a little bit more close, this was not specifically reviewed by planning board. So I will walk through these, and I'll note that Angie worked on these also, and will be available to answer questions. A floor of the building shall be considered in residential use, at least 75% of the floor square footage is dedicated to residential use. That threshold of 75% shall be measured according to the percentage of the floor square footage dedicated to residential use. Residential use shall mean multifamily dwelling units, which although located in the same building or on the same floor as hotel units are not hotel units. And classification of multifamily dwelling units as residential versus hotel shall be done on a calendar year basis, and, next slide, please. Hotel units shall mean those multifamily dwelling units used or available for use as short-term rentals for no more than 250 days during a calendar year. The offering of multifamily dwelling units for short-term rentals shall not disqualify such units from being considered residential. Short-term rentals are defined as rental stays which do not exceed 30 consecutive calendar days. And then the last one is, height in the CMU district become less restrictive via text amendment to the City of Hendersonville zoning ordinance, then the less restrictive standards would apply to this project from the date of adoption of that ordinance amendment. And that's just to catch that if we were to make a text amendment in the future, change the requirements or definition of height restrictions within the CMU, that this project would then fall under whatever that change might be. And that is my last slide.
Anyone have questions, Mr. Hallway? Mr. Smith, do you have any questions?
Aye.
Okay. We have no questions at this point. Madam Clerk, has this public hearing been advertised in accordance with general statutes?
Yeah.
Opened the public hearing. We have, no one signed up in person to speak. Is there anyone who is online wishing to speak? So staff, if you could moderate those, and if you would please give your name and your address for the clerk's record.
You've been unmuted.
Tim Fitch, 1046 Patton Street. This project is guarded alive by the public support, especially for its preservation and rehabilitation of iconic historic structure, the Cedars. And one must note that the direct participation of the shipment family in the project is a distinctive asset, with their commitment to honoring of the heritage of our city. I have a few questions and a comment. During the process, we have been presented with gathering drawings of the proposed project. At an early meeting, I had asked about views from other locations for special interest in the northern exposure, the view from Ashville Highway, the view from Henswell or the football field. Currently, the existing view includes major large canopy trees that are a significant part of the cityscape. And in relation to condition nine, the question is what trees would be retained, and what would be the appearance of the landscape when the building moved in? As one tree board member has said, there's a lot of trees there. So, some definition of that I think is important, as this will be a very prominent structure for years to come. A few questions about functionality. The project is located at the intersection of two major one-way thoroughfares, Seventh Avenue and North Church Street. So the inevitable question that many ask, how does one access the facility and the garages, especially facility guests? Now, solutions state what? The practical question is whether this is a 24/7 amenity, and what would occur if were eliminated available perhaps at some point in the future? Because as we all know, disoriented drivers can be a hazard, and when realized that then C D O T will be way of bringing in on the permit, that could also affect the functioning of this very complex but important design. And I ask this because the many comments that one hears is, how is the traffic going to work here? Because this is a major issue at this location. The other issue is off-site, and I support that inclusion on the site plan, because it would seem to be an essential element, especially in support of game use, meeting or conference events for which this project will serve an important civic meaning. And unfortunate, if the off-site parking facility were eliminated or sold at some point in the future, and thus rendering the meeting and conference element a major issue. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fitch.
Madam Mayor, we don't see any other public comments.
No other public comments? Sure, let's go with the moment.
Lynn Williams, raise your hand.
Okay.
You've been unmuted.
Thank you. This is Lynn Williams, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Give your, your name and address for the clerk's record, please.
Sure. Tammer Peacock, and the architect for the project, and-
Mayor, we have a virtual public comment.
We have, we have someone online. We'll get to you in just a minute. Okay. Will, person online, give your name and address for the clerk's record.
Okay. The name is Lynn Williams, and the address is 309 Chatham Avenue. I want to start first by thanking the council for their time and their work, and for being here today. I want to also thank the city staff, all the work they've put into this as well. My main concern is, actually, was repeated by Mr. Fitch, it's around condition number nine. I do believe that there's close attention that needs to be painted. I appreciate how in the Fleming Street review process, you've included the tree board review, and that seems to have been included in some of the thought process. I don't see a tree board review here with this process, and I do think it's very important. So I wanted to bring that to your attention. If you look at this site on Google Maps, you can see that it has a large canopy space. It's above the top of the hill of downtown, and there's a slight hill, and then also it's one of the last wooded blocks in downtown. So it's incredibly important that we're considering these trees that run through the center of the property. I appreciate that there's been some protected along the edges, but there's actually a swath of trees through the middle of the property that I think are very important, and perhaps with the feedback of the tree board, then consideration could be made to just slightly adjust the two large towers so that they could accommodate these trees. The trees offer floodwater mitigation, wildlife habitat, and it's essential for our bird and tree city. There's also a giant spruce or pine right along the front lane that I don't see on the site plan, and I think this is, this would be really important to try to save this as well. And that is really my main comment.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
Thank you. Now?
Okay. I guess I should do my name and address, right? Tammer Peacock, and we're at one of the four First Avenue's. And I'll just start by just thanking everybody, it's, I feel like it's been a long run to get to where we are, you know? We've all worked hard to build consensus, and it's wonderful to be part of a project that, that kind of links all the different parts of the community together and meets so many different needs that we've all hoped for. I wanted to just speak a little bit about the design, you know, in that, you know, that's the part that we've played the most role in. We, when we first looked at this project, the massing was really important to us, because it has a scale, and, you know, the buildings that we're proposing are quite large, so we, what we, we broke the mass down into components that resemble the Cedars. So, so there's deep grooves in elevation, and there's, the base of the building is rusticated and the same material as the Cedars. We embedded that last floor into the roof line, so it's kind of, you know, tucked in, hidden a bit. And so we really feel like this design is, is mountain architecture, it's, it's not something that could go anywhere, it's just designed for discount. And so we're so happy, you know, to be able to be a part of that. Just to address, you know, a few of the questions, we are trying to save the landscape, we, you know, the area of the lawn where many people have been buried out there, all of that area, we're saying, we're not touching the trees on the corner where the gazebo is. There's a nice big red maple in the middle of the side that we're going to try to relocate, like we have to slide it a little bit to say that we are, 21 mature red maples on all three sides. So that should really light it up and fall, and they're, they're going in at 10, 12 feet. And they're going in at 10, 12 feet. So we were paying attention to the landscape. We still have work to do. You know, many of the nuances of the way the skylight works blocks and meeting ABA code and stuff, that all plays into things, the maintenance of, you know, how to keep people walking from the lobby where they'll check in at the cedars to get to the other buildings. So that plays a role with landscape and changes in grade and plant earth and stuff. So just to tell you a little bit about how the site circulation works. If you were going to go down and block them, you would only be going there because you actually lived in the building. And that entrance over by the Catholic churches, school, McDonald's, it would just be for those folks. The remax lot is public parking in the design. So we're including that site and it was a condition of the approval that we would, we would submit that site plan. And we get 64 spots there. They will have the valet, you know, for all the hotel guests and they will check in in the historic building, but then they'll, if that for some reason, you know, was, you know, was the middle of the night or whatever it was, that remax lot is evacuated. I mean, I look forward to moving forward with it. You know, with the pandemic, we had design changes through the year and that's why it's taken us this time to get to you. But the way that we've conceived the, you know, the hotel condo concept, it's a financially viable, you know, operating model for the business. And so we look forward to it. And I don't know if it was mentioned, but the ballroom is a 300-person ballroom. So it's not like the other hotels that you've approved. So it's quite different and it will be quite green. So we're excited.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Fitch?
Just to
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Just to clarify that you did address the off-site parking as part of the plan.
Yes, yes. And for any reason, and I know that they said, well, why didn't you, they did something different with that site later, we would replace that parking some other way, ways in it, you know what I mean? Either do a deck as part of the new redevelopment of that site or whatever. But we committed 64 spots to it.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you.
I have copies of the drawings. I'll just, I guess I'll leave them because I'm sure about
You can just leave them there.
Okay. Because it gives you copies of the renders.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Or virtual comment?
I don't see any hands raised, ma'am.
Okay. Well, in that case, we will close this public hearing.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
If you could remind the audience that since this is considered a remote meeting, they will, we, the city council will still accept comments for 24 hours following the flood of this year.
Thank you. We, because of the limitations on meetings where not everyone is present, will not be voting on this until a later time and we'll set that in a moment. But we can accept written or email comments for another day. So if there's something that comes to mind in the near future, you can do that. We will be setting our adjourned meeting later in the meeting, but it will be on Monday at, I believe it's 5:15. We will make that official later on this evening. All right. We will then go on to our second public hearing, which is a conditional rezoning Fleming Street Medical Office Building, T-20-41-CZD. Tomorrow, you're going to do this one.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. This is the Fleming Street Medical Office Building Project, like you'd mentioned. City is receipt of a conditional rezoning application from Carlton Collins and CCP Fleming LLC for the development of a three-story medical office building. The subject property is currently vacant and you can see the pin numbers on the screen. There was two formerly existing single-family houses that have been changed into commercial uses and they were formerly 903 and 919 Fleming Street, but that property is currently vacant. The existing zoning is MIC and MICSU. There's a special use permit attached to one of the parcels. I'll go into a little bit more detail on that in a minute. They're proposing to be rezoned at MIC, CZD, which is Medical Institutional Cultural Conditional Zone District. The total acreage of the site, the acre, is 0.88 acres. And like I mentioned before, the proposed use is a medical office building. So I'm going to go over the special use permit first that was approved in 1998 by city council. As you see, it was at 919 Fleming Street. So the rezoning was to rezone the property from R6 High VNC Residential to MICSU. This was to allow the property to operate as a professional office, or in the existing family structure that was on the property that you see in this photograph. City council did place conditions on that special use permit. First condition was that the existing structure had to remain subject to renovation and expansion per the NC Building Code. A one-way entrance to the rear parking from Fleming Street. One-way exit from rear parking lot, or yeah, from back from court. No on-street parking was laid out for this project. And they also had to submit a stormwater management plan that met the city's requirements and had to be reviewed by the city. And the last one said that they could not have a sign that exceeded 30 square feet. So as you'll see, this is the proposed zoning and the existing zoning. So the existing zoning is, like I mentioned, MIC and MICSU. As you'll see, parcels to the north are zone MICSU and PID Plant Institutional Development and R6. Parcels to the east are zone MIC, PID, CZD, and R6. Parcels to the south are zone MIC and PCD, Plant Commercial Development. Parcels to the west are zone R6, MIC, and R19000. If rezoned, the entire property would now be under the zoning classification of MIC, CZD. So as you can see on the map on your left, that's the existing land use. So that's currently showing what type of uses are on adjoining properties. As you'll see, party hospitals to the, an established residential neighborhood to the west. And Hendersonville High School is to the east. And there's professional medical office buildings along that corridor and the surrounding adjacent areas. Future land use, the land use, as you see, that property and most, well, all surrounding properties, that's urban institutional. So as you'll see, urban institutional, the classification, the goal of that classification is to create cohesive, well-defined urban campus for medical and educational institution with supportive office service and residential uses that is integrated with downtown. As you see, offices are a primary recommended land use under the future land use map. Development guidelines, it mentions that for the urban institutional development, that they have design guidelines as downtown support. And the first, or the first two development guidelines for downtown support is a minimal front setback and a rear or limited side parking only. That's important to note because that will come in later as one of the proposed conditions from planning board that I'll discuss that later. So surrounding area, this is a street view in front of what was 1919 Fleming Street. Like I mentioned previously, properties to the west are mostly single-family houses and established neighborhoods. Medical office buildings and professional buildings are pretty prominent along Fleming Street corridor. And then Party Hospital is just south of the property. Next slide. So these are existing, this is photos of the existing condition on the site currently. As you'll see, there's a property or there's a buffer along what looks like the backside of the property, which is the western boundary. That's important to note later on too, as part of a condition recommended by planning board. Next slide. So this, neighborhood compatibility meeting withheld on November 24, 2020 for this project. Citizens joined virtually. They had concerns about the height of the building, the buffering, stormwater runoff, and possible flooding. This was the initial submitted by the advocate. This is the first sign that he submitted. As you'll see, I'm going to highlight the changes to the site plan through the process. So it is pretty, so it's more clear that this was not, this will not be the site plan that you're voting on tonight. As you'll see, the site plan shows that the building is approximately 20 feet from the rear setback line. 10-foot type B buffer was provided along the western property line in accordance to the zoning ordinance. And it is also important to note that this meets the ordinance as it's written. So this was adhering to the ordinance or the zoning ordinance regulations. Next slide. I think that's the older presentations. I can go ahead. There's another site plan that has similar changes. So upon receiving comments from the plan or from the neighborhood compatibility meeting, the developer went back and changed the way some of the site features were located. So one of the more noticeable changes was that the addition of 13 green giants and nine Norway spruce. Right, can you go back to the previous slide? So those additional trees acted as a buffer between the actual buffer and the back of the building. Those were placed between those two, in that area. The new site plan that he provided to planning board also showed the building 25 from the rear property line instead of the 20 feet that was originally shown. Previous plan. And this new site plan showed the building approximately two feet to the to the southern property line, which would be to your left on this picture. Yeah, towards R D, that's even two feet closer to that property line. This was the plan that was presented to planning board for review, planning board recommending conditions, which you will see on the next slide. So highlighting the planning board conditions, the first condition was that the building be located at the front setback line to kind of better make the plan where allow for a minimum front setback and basically getting the building closer to the street. This was also a condition placed to try to get some of the height of the existing neighborhood to the west. The second condition was to maintain the type B buffer that was planted as part of the special use permit originally. It's a pretty mature buffer at this point, so retaining that buffer was important. They also recommended that beyond the western, or the type B buffer on the 919 property, that the 3 property, which is a mature buffer made up of various plant materials to preserve as well, act as a buffer, or an existing buffer instead of planting a new buffer without texture. Operation was to be in accordance of 15-4 of the zoning ordinance, which outlines how to preserve existing vegetation. Much like the original special use permit, this recommendation was that the site have a stormwater management plan and system in place. Since it is under acre, it did not trigger or require city to have a stormwater plan, so that is additional plan that would not be normally required. And the final condition was that all lighting on the South Beach dark sky will comply. Excellent. The tree board made a recommendation recently at their meeting on Tuesday, so that's why it's not currently in or planned or in or separate. So this recommend, this recommendation is not in the list of uses and conditions in your motion. So that's something to note. The recommendation basically revolved around replacement of the existing trees and that. Next slide. So this is the most recent concept plan that the developer has provided here. Provided between board and city council. Staff have been focused on addressing the four conditions that were originally recommended by the planning board. And those are included in the list of uses and conditions. This sketch shows the developer's latest proposal for addressing compliance with those conditions. Staff feels that the report represents an effective design response to the conditions that were presented at planning board, i.e. moving the building to the front of the side and protecting the existing buffer along the western property line. Staff feels that the developer made a good, or did a good job of trying to address those conditions that have been brought up by the citizens, staff, and planning board. Next slide. The developer, in order to design the site in this way, the developer has also presented conditions that he feels is needed in order to successfully create the site plan that is shown. So to accomplish the proposed site plan as shown, developers request the following conditions. Waive the setback requirements along 9th and Fleming Street. Reduce the parking requirements to allow the approximate number of spaces shown. So normally for a building of that size, that's a medical office building, it requires 70 spaces. The plan currently proposes 51 spaces instead. And retain, they're going to retain the existing western buffer and supplement with additional plannings only as required. Staff support these additions as supporting the design intent of the revised concept plan and addressing the integration of new development existing neighborhood conditions. And I'll be happy to answer any questions if you may have.
Any questions, Mr. Mark?
Yes, ma'am. What does only as required mean and who requires it?
Yeah, so that's a good question. So I think staff would be looking over that. I think that would be something the council may give some discretion to or give us some guidance on how that would look. As of right now, with preserving the existing vegetation, it's kind of a tricky, a tricky situation because you can't completely go with the ordinance because it probably will not meet the buffer, even though the buffer that is existing would be better than a planted brand-new type B buffer. So I think that staff would probably be needing some guidance or direction on maybe what council has in mind for, or maybe that can be, since it is a developer proposed condition, maybe some conversation with the developer on what they foresee that being.
So Tyler, is John, sir, you asking the councilmen that, or the developers asking the options in reading the buffer required as specified in the ordinance? That they leave that natural buffer that is there now and supplement. So it'd be one of the guys either read the buffer and supplement or cut the buffer down and put in the buffer in accordance with the, that, are those the options with the council?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Well, I went out and looked at it today, and you definitely don't want to cut it down. You don't want to remove the buffer and come back with something new. I just want a little clarity on, we need to get into, does this have to be for five years from now, if there's a complaint that hasn't been maintained, can still go there and tell us what has to be done and they have to stick to that? I would just like some terminology in the special use that defines that, so there's no question.
So I would recommend that, with that understanding, and also with trying to marry up which of the conditions the planning board recommended that these conditions might replace, that after all the public comment has been received and after the city council has given its feedback, that between now and the continued meeting, that staff work on that and put together the, a more finalized list of what, based on the feedback from city council. And we could flesh that out.
That's good.
I have a question about the parking situation. So my office, it is a medical office, and we're like, I don't know, 13,000 square feet of my building, and we need 10 to 15 spots, you know, regularly between staff and patients. So, and then this building is like 10 times the size of my small medical office. And I'm like super concerned that is not even going to be nearly enough parking spots just to accommodate their staff and that large of a medical facility. I mean, I know there's parking just up at the deck with the hospital, but I don't know if they have something to work out with the hospital with a shared parking, but that's a pretty big situation, so just wondering about that.
Yeah. Please, go ahead.
We can hear from the developer.
Yeah.
At, at some point here. Can we hold that?
Yes.
That, that tomorrow could answer.
May I have a question?
Yeah.
So Mr. Morrow, I have a question, that is, so they're proposing 51 spaces, sort of following up with what council member said. So if you have 51 spaces, what square footage would that building have to be and 51 spaces would be the right number?
I'm not.
Building have to decrease in size.
So off the map, off the top of my head, I don't know. I know that it's one space for 250 square feet floor area, so the map on the top of my head, I'm not sure whatever that comes out to be. I think originally the building was required to have 54 spaces. I think it was maybe a little bit over 13,000 square feet originally. So I believe that's correct. So roughly, it's 13,000 square feet, probably around 53, 54 spaces.
Okay. Thank you.
Wait, I'm confused. I'm sorry. So 18,536. You said originally it was supposed to be only 54 spaces at 13,000 square foot?
That may be missed, I mean, missed by a little bit.
I thought it was 70 is required.
It's 17,000, not 13,000.
Oh, there it is.
So we can ask the developer about that. Any other questions for Mr. Morrow or hold here from the developer? Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Collins, we asked you down here.
I did, thank you very much. Madam Mayor and Councilman, my name is Carlton Collins. I'm pleased to be with you behind the Gulf Texas project. You've had some good questions, and I can address them. First, I wanted to say that we have been on a little bit of a journey with the project, and of course, we have done our best to try to meet the concerns of the neighbors as well as provide a facility here hopefully that will address a need that is in Henderson as defined by my clients for how far the office space, research that they've done. This scheme evolved by first attempting to design a, moving the building forward within the setbacks that were currently placed, and that scheme, so limited to parking, it was very feasible to accomplish that. At staff's, planning staff's encouragement, we sought to take an alternative approach. Design that you see here. Of course, we are in sketch mode, conceptual mode with this particular drawing, so there will be things that get fleshed out as we apply this to the final designer in the coming days and weeks ahead. I would like to just say a couple of things for clarification. When we relocate the building to this position, it's going to necessitate that we make some modifications to the footprint based on the functioning of the building. Previously, we basically had a rear of the building that we could use in a certain way that we haven't really been able to, because neighbors sort of have public face on every side. So the purpose of identifying this maximum footprint is to give us an area to work within. We don't believe that we're going to need that degree of space, but we want to allocate an area that we can comfortably fit the building, hopefully near the same size as before. But it may not be just simply because we have to make certain adjustments based on where the building is located now. So these are, we would anticipate at least to be maximized, but we don't anticipate that we would have a facility of that size, which, as you all have inferred, has, has an impact on the parking. In this particular scheme, this is the maximum parking that we can choose on the site. So I know that my clients and I had previously discussed their desire potentially to have parking relationships with other nearby property owners, and they are happy to seek those kind of measures if needed to supplement what they have now. But there's nothing formal in place at this time. That's about all I can add to some of the questions that have already been posed, but I'm happy to, if there's any other questions, you can shoot us ahead.
Any other questions?
Do you know if this is like a single medical office with multiple floors or two multiple medical offices in this one building?
So as a, as a free story facility, we anticipate there'll be multiple offices within this building. We have at least initially conceptualized a mix of one and two provider offices that could be located on each floor or a three provider office potentially on floor. So we anticipate there'll be a mix of offices in the building.
I think there might have been some confusion. So there's this slide that has the developer's proposed conditions. And, okay, and it says 17,400 square foot medical office with 70 spaces. This space is not 17,000. So what is the required amount of parking spaces for the size of this building? Per our.
Why do you assume it's going to be 17,000? So he has to change it.
Yeah, I thought that it says 13,400 and something, 13,536 is what I thought it said on the actual application. Do you want to add that?
That is what was in our package. And some of the.
The 13,000 building that was originally submitted was right at 13,500 square feet, and we're going to need to be a little bit larger than that. And we just are trying to identify areas to work within to give us some flexibility on extending the footprint in a modest way to accommodate relocation on the site.
So what is the little bit larger than that square footage?
Well, we don't know because we haven't, we haven't, we haven't tested that yet. I could speculate and say it could be approximately 15,000 square feet in size, could be slightly less. We just don't know until we get to the next level of design and can make those adjustments.
So in, in the application that we have, it's, it states that it's going to be 13,5 something. I mean, that's what you guys have to do, or?
How can we do this if we don't have the size of the building?
I'm not comfortable doing that.
Exactly, you have to, before we can grant variance on the parking, you have to know the size. This is 20 spaces, basically, we are right there.
So do we know what the zoning requirement for 15,000 square foot commercial building is?
We did just check that, that would be 60, based on the medical needs, it would be 60 spaces.
60, 60, so I'm not asking for 51.
Right, that's correct. Plus, we still have no agreements on record with outside party, correct? Shared parking with other areas. Yeah, I think that was probably indicated yet, not recently, comprehension of that.
So what has been submitted? Because this is not actually a plan, is that right?
Correct. So the developer has to address the conditions, they had taken the project to, full site plan, when they moved the building to the new location, to the front of the site, the interior plan shifted, and I think basically, because with the previous site, there was a rear sidewalk that was at the top of the retaining wall, that was intended to be an employee entrance, or a number of features that impacted the floor plan that with the new location on the site have required them to basically revisit what that floor plan is.
So it, it seems like that it is a trade-off, right? That the ordinance doesn't require on its face then to move the building, right? So it, it's going to become a public, a policy question for you, which is the most important. I had a question for the applicant in that when they moved the building to the front corner, the actual space within the building dedicated to offices is definitely going to change, dedicated to the actual medical offices, because it's the moving and the reconfiguration that's causing the increase in square footage. So as far as usable office space, that may not be increasing, and I think that's what's more related to parking than having a large, having to have large lobbies or something like that.
Yes, it's difficult for me to answer right now, but I think your synopsis is pretty close in that, you know, we're, we're having to provide some functionality through the building and address the issue of whether sort of public space internally. We anticipate that we'll be expanding the actual medical office areas per se.
A question on November, it's okay, let me jump in.
Yes. Go ahead.
My question to you, Mr. Collins, is if we decide to hold you to the 51 spaces that we're looking at in this drawing right now, are you, or would you be able to build a smaller building?
Well, I'm not quite sure how to answer that, that question. I think the, the opportunity for this to be smaller than what it is shown on this drawing is high because, as I've stated before, we, we need the space to work within. And if it's desired that we minimize that space, we can. My client has, has indicated that they're willing to seek out parking agreements with other neighbors close by to help supplement anything that's, that's needed. We would have to go through a, a, another level of design, I think, to really finalize what that building size would be. But the intent of it being something that we more closely support, 51 spaces, we would certainly do our best to comply with that.
So I just feel a little uncomfortable because I feel like the plans that we're looking at are not what, what we're voting on. Like, if we're voting on something, we're obviously not voting tonight, but I, I feel like the proper way to do things is that we are voting on what we actually see on paper, and that's not actually the case here. And so I don't want to vote on something that is not accurate information.
This is a change, it's not just wiggling the building back and forth a little bit. I'm, I'm not sure that we're ready to make a decision when we, while we have this sketch.
I would like to say this, I like how you repositioned it. And I would have no problem with doing away with setbacks that have been requested. The adjustments there, are you willing to maintain the existing buffer, the things there, I, I think you're, you've gone a long way on this, appreciate it. Let's just get something better to work with that we all have a more comfortable willingness to vote on. Right now, we're voting on, you know, a virtual handshake, and let's do better. But I like what you have doing, Mr. Collins, very good.
I also completely support additional medical offices and facilities in our small town. We are rapidly growing. A percentage of aging folks that live here, and we need a lot of good quality medical care, and so, and, and we are short, you know, with facilities and that kind of thing. So I do want to see, you know, more things like this be able to happen. But I also feel like we need more information.
I'd like to agree completely with what's been said already. And I also like to add that that's a really tight area for parking to start with, considering there's really no home street parking available around there, at least not practically. So it does seem to me that parking is pretty important in this spot, and I agree completely that it's very difficult for us to vote without, especially going conditional zoning, that's the reason we have it, that we know exactly what it is we're voting on. So I would agree that it's difficult to vote on this, not really voting against it.
I guess I'm not as hung up on the parking. I would assume that developer would not build a building and then have his tenants complaining that there's no place to park. So I'm, I'm willing to give them some wiggle room as far as the parking goes. So I'm, I'm willing to give him some wiggle room as far as the parking goes. But yeah, I'm not ready to vote on something that still is so general.
Speaker, considering that we would like to have more details before we vote, should we open the public hearing and get comments at this point since it has been advertised?
Yes, ma'am. That's just what I was gonna say. You always have the option of continuing the public hearing, not to Monday, but to March, to give the developer time to take your comments into account and then allow an additional public comment after that. But I think we like the way it's going, we would just like a little more detail.
Anything now, otherwise we'll go to the public hearing.
I will say that if we have a chance to continue it to March, I would almost prefer to do just because of all of, I assume we're going to be getting some comments now, but all of the comments that were made and then the compatibility thing and the fact that this plan is now so different than what they saw. I would really like to hear from them because there were some very strong about this project and there are folks that live right around that. And so if we can continue in March, I would prefer that.
Okay, so Madam Clerk, has this public hearing been advertised in accordance with general statutes?
Yeah.
We'll open this public hearing. Nobody has signed up for in-person comment. Is there any comment virtually? The staff will moderate that, please.
Ms. Lynn Williams, raise your hand there. You've been
Hello again, thank you for your time. Lynn Williams, three oh nine Chabook Avenue. I once again wanted to express my support for the planning board's condition number two for preserving the existing buffers and everything that's listed there. And I just wanted to make sure that we, if you were going to be including the tree board's feedback of what others have quoted a graph within the tree board review. And I just wanted to make sure that this would be included in consideration with the condition number two. I'm not gonna say thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
Zach, does he raise his hand? Zach, do please re-raise your hand. Zach, you'll, you'll need to connect the audio microphone to speak. Dial in at six four six five five eight eight six five six. And then press star nine to raise your hand. You can connect audio that way. Ken Fitch has raised his hand. You've been muted.
Ken Fitch, ten forty six Patton Street. There is a basic problem here. The project is too large for its location. A three-story building with necessary parking, its design, size, and deployment presents many issues of incompatibility to the adjacent residential neighborhood as has been documented in the testimonies in the agenda package. A smaller building with a smaller parking area might be designed to generate fewer issues and better compatibility. The staff ordered recommended conditions to address the issues generated by this project. And their action is supported by the tree board regarding the preservation of the essential vegetative buffer area for the adjacent residential neighborhood. While the rezoning application might seem to be a simple shift in zoning terminology and categorization, it should be recognized that this is actually a radical change in designation. As the current zoning is MIC dash SU Medical Institutional Cultural Special Use. It is special use. And the property was only categorically rezoned from R six to facilitate the adaptive reuse of a small neighborhood residential building for a small business that recently provided home health supply. But other than that adaptive reuse, the property has retained the character of the R six neighborhood on which it is located. The special use process, as some of us well remember, was sometimes an intense process. But one, but it was one in which it was stated that the applicant must demonstrate compatibility with the neighborhood in which it is located. And one notes that incompatibility in many forms is the main tradition here. Furthermore, in the past, during the special use process, there were continued assurances that the project would be limited to the stated use and the specific site plan in perpetuity. These assurances presented a covenant with the community that ensured some stability for adjacent property owners. The rezoning here represents a rupture of that covenant in its severe alteration of the character of the neighborhood and the natural environment. In order to make this site function for this new use with this large three-story structure and its parking lot, it would be necessary to alter the terrain and remove onsite trees, raise the grades through infill to the level of Fleming Street, along with an added construction of a retaining wall near the western property line that would make the continuing existence of the state buffer unsustainable with disruption of soil, root systems conducive to continued survival. Any replacement plantings would take generations to provide an equivalent buffer. In the plans of thus far, the construction of the retaining wall and the extension of the facility footprint would inevitably resume the existing established buffer. As the applicant acknowledged, they plan to retain what trees they can, but some will have to be removed for construction. The loss of this landmark vegetative buffer would have severe impact on the adjacent neighborhood. In making a determination for approving or rejecting the project, the zoning ordinance offers six guidelines of consideration, including comprehensive plan consistency, compatibility with sound, surround uses, change conditions, public interest, public facilities, and effect on the natural environment. All of which were clearly informing the conditions recommended by staff and the planning board along with the tree board, especially with regard to compatibility with the residential neighborhood and environmental impact. The applicant has consistently cited compliance with the comprehensive plan and compatibility with the other medical facilities on Fleming Street. And with regard to the height, has cited the nearby party hospital and Hendersonville High School, although those are major community institutions, not private offices. The frequent reference to the comprehensive plan does underscore another issue here. While designation does recommend nutritional uses and offices as primary land use, it also includes residential as secondary. In recent council meetings, there have been frequent references to the need to update the comprehensive plan to address changing needs and conditions. A number of recent projects that have come before you, some with marginal appropriateness or awkward aspects, have been approved with the citation of addressing one of our primary needs, the need for affordable housing or workforce housing. Workforce housing. And it's important in this matter tonight to recognize that the adjacent neighborhood that would be negatively impacted by this project is an established workforce neighborhood and a neighborhood impossible to replicate elsewhere in the city. And it is in just such a neighborhood that those who work in offices like the one proposed tonight would seek to live, to raise their families in close proximity to schools, hospitals, barber shops, and both of those doors, all within walking distance in this walkable city. Such a neighborhood is important to preserve and protect. In our planning decisions, there needs to be some balance between residential neighborhoods and responsible development. For without that balance and the assurances of such, we will cease to function as a community. The proposed project is too large for the location. A smaller building and a smaller footprint would be a step toward compatibility consistent with the function of community.
Thank you, Mr. Fitch. Do we have Zach on?
Zach, I still do not see you connected to audio. You will have other opportunities to make comment. If you go to hendersonville.gov-publiccomment, you can submit your comment there. And assuming this meeting is continued, you will
If that Zach is Zach Forrest, we did receive a, an email comment from him, which council members were noticed of it was his holder. So, so we give that try and put in, we do have your original comments. If it's another Zach, we hope you can try and Anyone else that you saw that was seeking recognition?
There are no other Zach.
Okay, so we will not close the public hearing. We will continue it to our March meeting soon. Unless there's some request that it occur before that.
Ron, may I ask you, this is John.
Yes, please.
Number that has a raised hand, oh, that's Zach.
I think just recently.
All right, I know that's there. Hey, good afternoon or good evening, this is Zach Forrest. Can everyone hear me?
Okay, yes.
Wonderful. Yeah, I dialed it and that's why I couldn't people that's there. So my name's Zach Forrest, I live at five twenty Bassburn Court. And the property directly beside the proposed rezon. First, I wanna thank Tyler and the rest of the Hendersonville City members for all the diligence on this one item. My wife and I purchased the home here because we love the area. And, and the people and interacting with the local city has made us all more grateful to call Hendersonville Home. At the neighborhood sit meeting, it became clear, initial site plans both in November, December do not fit the needs of the compatibility requirements, the public interest and the effects of the natural environment. After receiving the plan, the planning board staff recommended rezon conditions. I just wanna voice that it is crucial that all the recommended rezoning conditions be set forth and passed. Myself and neighbors have concerns that have not been addressed by the developers since the planning board meeting and the officially submitted site plan. I may show this sketch here, but I have these concerns in the planning board meeting and again for this meeting as was staged just a minute ago. Regarding the landscaping and the tree removal, I'm concerned based on the officially proposed site plan. The trees on the proposed ten-foot buffer, buffer will remove the currently forty-foot plus-high buffer and replace it with shrubs and young trees that will take years to grow and provide any level of privacy. Note that none of these trees will provide a level of height of this proposed building. I mean, even none of the privacy is expected to be retained by the current plan. Further, the trees proposed will take twenty-plus years before providing any level of privacy. And the tree board review has also noted concerns in this level, under the area. The proximity of the building to the latest official submission was, the proximity was twenty-four feet away from our residence property line and the rest of the neighborhood. A three-plus-story building this close to the rest of the neighborhood is very concerning. The planning board noted similar concerns, and I agree with the planning board that the property should be relocated. But I also agree that it should not be this large of a property to get a building to get this. I'm concerned about the lack of the deep surrounding retaining walls. How high are these retaining walls expected to be? Will the height of the building start from the top of this retaining wall? I'm concerned about the water buildup along this wall resulting in drain water and medical waste, medical wastewater flooding and flowing into the adjoining neighborhood as it currently does to some degree already. There are children playing in these, in these yards and medical waste flowing to these neighborhoods is a serious concern. The tree board review also noted concerns around the clear need, the lack of detail around the retaining wall that need to be implemented from this developer. The water drainage, so based on the map, the note on both of them, the plan is to divert stormwater and the drains that will carefully, or will have to be carefully configured to avoid backwater in a joint residential basement. I'm concerned the compounding drainage issues that currently persist cause a tremendous, or could cause a tremendous financial burden that would otherwise be addressed by the proper development of this, this site. The planning board also noted concerns here regarding the stormwater issues. The light at night, another medical building means more intrusive lights. Our bedroom already gets enough light from the party hospital parking garage. We don't need another spotlight beaming in our bedroom at night. The planning board also noted concerns here as well. How does the grading of the property affect the adjoining properties in the neighborhood? Will the grading be up to the Fleming Street level? And if so, does that mean the retaining wall on the ground level will be the same height? That's eight to ten feet. If yes, this creates concerns that the grading and the buildings that's proposed, this proposed these towering three-plus stories, plus the height of this grading will equal four-plus stories high from the adjoining neighborhood. Four stories is incredibly high for directly beside a residence. Let me further iterate all these concerns along with the concerns of the tree board review and the planning board's recommended rezoning conditions. Please do not let this move forward until an official site plan, not a drawing, but an official site plan that meets the recommended rezoning conditions that have been reviewed and approved. Thanks for the opportunity today, and welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Forrest. Madam Mayor, before you move on, so that we don't have to renotice, that council make a motion to continue it to March fourth at five forty-five or sooner after, as it may be heard here, so that we don't have to readvertise?
Yes.
I was figuring we would do. I was saying we could do it too much before, unless there's some pressing reason why we need to do it before that. I'm not sure, it's always hard to get council together. It's gotta be four weeks, should be
Just gotta take that.
Yeah, to get everything together again.
May I make one, one quick statement? I just wanted to also point out, because I've heard a couple of comments. This area is already zoned MIC and MIC SU. So on our city, what you can actually see what the zoning ordinances currently are and then the maps. And that will give you the information of acceptable buildings and businesses and institutions that are already accepted under that. And so hospitals is actually already accepted under the MIC. So, and, and, and that's not changed. I mean, it's, it's been MIC for a long time. It's been planned medical, you know, facility area for a long time. I just would like to see more specificity out of the plan. And I think it's a good project and I'm grateful that the developer has already worked this far with the planning board. But we obviously just need to see more information. But once again, this isn't, we're not going from a residential property to some kind of crazy commercial property. This is already zoned for use. So I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you. If there is anything else, if someone would move to continue this public hearing until our March fourth meeting at, which will begin at five forty-five and the public hearing end be as, be part of our agenda for that evening.
Madam Mayor, I move that we move the public hearing to our March fourth meeting. Continue the discussion.
Is there any discussion? If not, those in favor of continuing this public hearing until our March fourth meeting? Mr. Miller?
Hi.
Ms. Hensley?
Hi.
Simpson?
Hi.
Simpson?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. We continue. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, may I ask one question before we move on?
Sure.
Regarding that meeting on March 4th, and that is, so since the public hearing is, has never been closed and still open, that means that they can bring back another drawing for us, correct? Like, we can look at another drawing and consider that before, or design, I should say, before we...
I think that's what we're hoping for.
Yeah, yeah, right, I see. The problem, just want to make sure of that.
All right. Thank you. So we will, we will look forward to that in four weeks. Unfinished business? We have none. We have new business. Would anyone like to take a break for a few minutes before we start? Yes, let's take about a five-minute break. For... Zach, and we will go on to new business. The first is a billing policy update regarding lease adjustments, and Jennifer Moss, I assume, is coming to us verbally.
Yes, I'm asking her to unmute.
Oh, you can't unmute, you can unmute as well. Okay. He's red hot. John, we've asked you to unmute. Is Jennifer available for this, for that, or do you believe?
She was on, but she maybe had a problem, so I'll get her to take it. Bidding, the mayor members of council appear to seek your approval of proposed changes to cities' lease adjustment policy. I'll just kind of run through the major changes that may be available, questions. So the main change is doing away with the need for receipts, and sometimes even receipts and pictures from customers, and also trying to speed up the process by not requiring staff to review multiple periods or wait for available information to get the average billing. Then the proposal, we will set standard rates for customers that they will be required to pay, and then the lease adjustment will be provided on top of that. That's really the bulk of the change, that it's intended to make it easier on the customer and on staff.
Any questions? No? All right, any discussion or emotion?
Madam Mayor, I'm going to counsel approve the lease adjustment policy changes as you presented.
Is there any discussion? No, we will take a roll call vote. Ms. Simpson?
Aye.
Ms. Hansley?
Aye.
Ms. Miller?
Aye.
And Mr. Smith?
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye as well. So that motion passes, and those policy changes have been accepted. Thank you. We are not considering Item B, the property trade, this evening. Did just want to remind council, we had some email correspondence regarding that, and that was in our public comments folder. And so, see then, the contract award Hebron Pressure Zone Water Improvements. Who is doing this one?
Mr. Stewart is our... Thank you, Mr. President.
Hi.
I'm asking Mr. Stewart to unmute, sir. Tyler, do you check if the lead snip is on?
Lead, yeah. I see we...
I'm just not connecting the audio.
Okay, I'll, I will jump in here and take care of it. So they are voting, we're receiving, council, we have received bids for the Hebron Zone project, the bid was received in November for the proposed Hebron Zone Water Improvements. Consists of installation of just over 2,000 linear feet of 6-inch and 8-inch diameter duffel iron water main, and purchases two master meter balls and abandonment of an existing water pumping station. The project is intended to boost insufficient water pressure for available fire flows for existing water customers in the area, which is located off of White Pine in the town of Little Park. We received bids, and we received a low bid from, we read this, Hunt...
Hey, John, sorry, I can take your meter if you like, sorry.
Go ahead.
Hey, so, yeah, so informal bids were received for the Hebron Pressure Zone project on November 3rd, 2020. In general, the project consists of about 2,000 feet of water main extension and abandonment of an existing city pump station. The project will improve water pressure and available fire flow for existing customers in the area. Eight bidders submitted informal bids. Of the eight bidders, Huntley Construction Company from Asheville, North Carolina, was the lowest responsive, responsible bidder with a bid of $380,467. Staff is requesting city council award the project to Huntley Construction Company and authorize the city managers as to keep the construction contract and approve change orders up to 10% of the contract amount. At this time, I could take any questions you guys may have.
Questions? There, thank you very much. If there are, no, is there any discussion or any motion?
Madam Mayor, the city council has authorized the city manager to award and execute a contract of construction of the Hebron Pressure Zone Water Improvements in the amount of $380,467, with the Huntley Construction Company the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, and authorize the city manager to approve change orders up to 10% of the contract amount not to exceed pledged bids available in the capital project ordinance as presented and recommended by staff.
Is there any discussion? No, we will again take a roll call vote. Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Ms. Huntley?
Hi, Huntley.
Simpson?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye, so that motion passes, and we move ahead with that. All right, that's been a while coming. Thank you. City council comments? Anyone have anything they want to mention?
I, I do know.
Yeah, go ahead.
So earlier in our consensus, I know we voted on the diversity equity inclusion position, and I know I spoke again with a couple other members of the council about the need for a committee, an official committee, and so I would like to push that we reform that official committee to help support that position, and also give the community more opportunity to help.
Yeah, I think that is our intent. What we're going to have to do first is come up with the, like we have with whatever it is this evening, which one, Samuel Services Board Charter, we're going to have to come up with some kind of guidelines and bylaws and number and terms and all of that, so I think that's something that we will be working on.
Well, I thought, that's what, I thought we were already getting that, actually.
Yeah, we had already, we had already said that we were moving forward.
Well, I, well, I, we went back and forth on whether we were officially going to do it. We had a de facto committee on the...
No, we've been told the de facto committee, that's...
Yes, I'm right.
Yeah, it's all good, absolutely.
Yeah, that is moving forward, it just takes several steps before we get to it. I would just like to mention that I think we have the politest Public Works employees. I was out walking the greenway today, and they were working, and when a pedestrian comes up, they stop, so they're not slinging dirt, or anything like that. You walk by, they pave, and I just appreciate that they do that. They do that when they're cutting grass. That has not been the case in other places I've visited, so I just want to give my thanks and appreciation for our park staff under Public Works. Anyone else have any comments?
I do.
Yes, go ahead.
It's not so much a comment, and I apologize, John, but I just, John, would you take a moment? There were some comments at the beginning of the meeting comparing Main Street and Seventh Avenue with regards to the budget funds, and would you mind just telling folks how that budget comes about? In other words, with regard to the extra taxes that folks pay in those locations to help fund those?
This circus is sent to the gladiators. So, as people may or may not know, the, first of all, we're required to have a balanced budget, which means that we have to have exact revenue and exact expenditures in North Carolina. It's not like the federal government where we can run a deficit, but we have to have a balanced budget, so that's the first piece. The second piece is the Main Street District, Municipal Service District, and Seventh Avenue District is the Municipal Service District. That, those two districts are set up at different times in order to provide improvements in each of those districts. The money for those two districts come from an extra property tax that property owners within the two districts must pay. So the Municipal Service District, the Main Street, the Municipal Service is a district that basically encompasses, I'll get some of this wrong, but it's basically between Church and King, and from Seventh Avenue to, all the way to, Luke may not be there, but at least to Caswell, or may, may stop at Allen, but basically that's the, that's the district for the Main Street District. And then there's the district, Seventh Avenue, that goes from Highway 64 down to Red Creek, and then along Locust Street. and then along Locust Street all the way to about 8th Avenue. So there's, there's districts, and everybody in that district has to pay an extra tax. Now, the tax in Seventh Avenue is a lower tax than the tax on Main Street. Tax on Main Street, if I'm not mistaken, is like 26 cents per $100, where the tax on Seventh Avenue, Brian, help me out, is seven cents, 12 cents?
Seventeen cents.
How much?
Seventeen.
Seven, so seventeen, now, so there's a difference in the two tax rates, so it generates a different amount of money. So the folks on Main Street, unless they are paying a higher tax, generates more revenue. And also that rep, that money goes to fund anything, extra garbage collection, extra services, same thing in Seventh Avenue. So it's really based on, and then also the property value comes into play there so that the revenue generated by the tax, the lower tax on Seventh Avenue, there's a fewer number of parcels on Seventh Avenue, so the revenue generated is less, therefore the expenditure has to be less. Same thing on, on Main Street, you have more property, higher value, you have higher revenue there, so you'll have more. I will say that we're mine of folks that are listening that we are getting a substantial improvement. Spending a million dollars on Seventh Avenue, streetscape improvement, so that is not incorporated in the voting, see, that was discussed tonight, that is above a billion dollars directly invested in Seventh Avenue area this fall. So, Mr. Smith, can I answer your question?
Oh, yeah, you hit the follow-up question, was, which was to talk about the project that was coming up in 2021. I appreciate you explaining that to the public.
Okay, any other comments from the council members? No, Mr. Comment? Anything for in, for your report this evening?
Yes, just two or three quick things, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. First, you heard the report on the city's initiative at your workshop meeting last week, unless I, here to proceed with the city joining that city's initiative. Is there any feedback? Whereas if we're not going to take part in the city's initiative, I'll pause here for any feedback regarding that.
Okay, I'll comment, and that, I think it would be a good move for the city to get involved with that initiative. I know that there's no, I know they talked about, or he talked about, cities being really ready to do something, and I know that we don't necessarily have funds budgeted for that, but it does seem to me that that is a smart move, moving forward with regard to how we construct buildings, you know, how we want to lay out our city with regard to its, our impact on the environment. And so I certainly think it would be a great network for you to be a part of, John, for being able to call people to get suggestions, you know, about whatever the topic may be that relates to that. So I'm in favor of it.
Thank you. Yes, and any other feedback? If I receive that feedback, then I assume council's in favor of us proceeding. I talked to you individually, so I think I know rest of the building before, so I just.
All right, I see no one with the negative comments here, so I guess that means move forward with it.
Thank you. The other thing is, at the last meeting, Crystal Colley brought up the Green Meadows sign, and this is something we have been talking about for a year, and COVID's gotten in the way and some other things that I don't make excuses for, but I talked with many of, all of the council in the last month, and the mayor, I know this, this particular item was a priority of the mayor a year ago, and he asked us about it, so, and all of the councils, so if it's okay with the council, we will put together some designs. There's several ideas, ranging from a brick subdivision-type signs, using the old granite barkers like we did on Main Street, to using the wayfinding signs, or a type of wayfinding signs, or decorative light bulbs that we hang banners on, so if it's okay with the city council, we will engage a sign company or somebody that can do this work and bring back some suggestions in the very near future for you to look at, and then ultimately engage the Green Meadows community to help us choose the appropriate signage. And I may suggest, if it's okay with council, if we could install a temporary sign to replace the one that's in bad shape there, similar to the sign that's there now, just to give us the ability to take some time to get the right sign, but also have a nice sign in that location. So I'll stand by for direction from the city council on those, those two.
Anyone have any objection to Mr. Comment moving forward with those proposals?
I have no objection, I just have a question. So when I looked it up, I think I sent you a picture, John, about the, it was on private property, and so can you put up a temporary sign on someone's property? Is he gonna, did the owner of the property agree to that, or?
So that's a great question, councilwoman, yes. So we would, we would go back to that owner, make sure he had an easement, the speaker, make sure we had permission to put that sign, even if it's on a temporary basis, to cover the city, because if you get this inside, you're correct, it is on private property outside of the right way, to the best of our knowledge. There may have been permission granted, but there was no permanent easement established that we can, that we can buy.
And we are seeking a broken easement this time?
Yes, yes, ma'am, absolutely, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And then the final item, mayor, members of the council, is, now, I know this is something that when I first got here was a very important product, the mayor had sea clip picks, and we didn't feel like it was going to be utilized, and it was a very expensive product, but now our decision has created our own reporting application for citizens to geolocate problems and report problems, and I think we'll be very efficient, and it's something that we developed and house. So I'd like Ryan and Allison to run the video showing the new application. It's not quite available to the public yet, but it will be on our website and replace the report problem button on the website. It's a big product that our own staff has developed, so run the video, please.
Hey, Hendersonville, do you have a pothole on your road or a street light up? Well, we want to know about it. Now you can submit your non-agency issues through an app and tag your location. Select your issue, provide applicable details, choose to include your location, and attach a photo of desire. If you don't have location settings, it will be on the map where the particular issue is located. Once submitted, city staff will review their request, submit it to the appropriate department, and then will work it in their schedule for repair. Don't mark them? No problem. You can also submit issues online with a computer and choose a location by clicking on the map. There is no need to download anything, just visit our website at hendersonbuildnc.gov/report. Thank you for helping us keep Hendersonville.
That's awesome.
Oh, my goodness. So our local actor there is the designer of the new program. He does a great job, as our whole GISD does, and so, and other folks are working to clean it up a little bit, like the ideal for citizens, we expect it to be available on the 15th. So 15th February, we're excited about it, and a great designer, GISD, so thanks, thank you, too.
So I ask a question, John, will we just go to the city websites on our smartphone to download the app?
It's, so Jerry, you don't even have to download, download an app, you just have the city website, and there'll be a button that says, I think Allison said, "Report a Problem," you just click on it for that.
Okay, great.
Mayor vote, that's members of the council, that's all, that's all.
All right, thank you, sounds good. Next, we have a, our boards and commissions, we have quite a few appointments, but first we have the Downtown Advisory Board merger.
Mayor vote, I'm willing, Ms. Carpenter is on the line if you get her to unmute.
Okay, whatever she's ready.
I'd ask her to unmute.
Good evening, thank you for having me on tonight. As our Main Street and Seventh Avenue Advisory Committee has been working the past few months following potentially merging together, and they voted all in agreement for this. The reason behind that was just a lot of the topics and overarching vision for the federal downtown has really lent itself for working on these things together. So we propose a merger to create a Downtown Advisory Board that will equal representation from Main Street and Seventh Avenue. Be glad to answer any questions or vote if you have more needs, knowledge, or anything.
Anyone have any questions? We did have a copy of the lengthy bylaws and, and information, so we have that to read through.
How many members will there be on that board now?
There would be five from Seven, five from Main, and four at large, so there would be fourteen total for voting, and then the two non-voting, which are the city council liaison and representative from the rest commission.
So everyone that was representing the two separate boards is included now, right?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Carpenter, may I ask you a question? Jerry Smith.
Yes, sir.
Is there any question in your mind that Seventh Avenue will not be adequately represented on this new board by merging the two? Will this affect Seventh Avenue in any way, Nancy?
I don't see that it will, just because we are really making sure that there is equal representation from the stakeholders. We do have one additional position available on Seventh Avenue because Mr. Dunlap stepped away just because he was too busy to attend our meetings, so we would, we open for an additional slot for that. But we've really merged our discussion over the past several years to see Seventh and Main as an overall downtown vision, so I think for my year of being here, it seems like our committee members all understand that and value both districts equally.
Thank you.
Other questions? No discussion or a motion?
Madam Mayor, I am sure that City Council adopts the resolution to merge the Downtown Main Street Advisory Committee, the Avenue Advisory Committee, to form the Downtown Advisory Board and adopt the charter and rules of procedure as presented.
Is there any discussion? No, we will vote by roll call. Ms. Simpson?
Aye.
Simpson?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. All right, very good. We have set up that board, and now we have to officially appoint, and there are lots of different specific positions. You have the various motions and agenda packet, and possibly as a separate attachment as well. There were recommendations of people to fill these slots. That doesn't mean you have to choose the people that are recommended, that is up to you, but. Speaker, is it all right if we fill in all the names and then vote all at once on that thing at the same time?
Yes, ma'am, and to the extent that you need to include a motion to suspend the rules and do that in a motion, I would, but yes, ma'am, I think you can do that.
Okay, someone would like to suspend the rules so we can vote once on all appointments?
Madam Mayor, suspend the rules so we can vote once on all the appointments.
All right, motion is to suspend the rules. We will take a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Simpson?
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. Thank you. All right, and first is stakeholder of the Seventh Avenue District. This is to fill a three-year and five-month term. The recommendations are Becky Ayers and Matthew Pickman. Anyone like to make nominations of either or both of those people or anyone else?
Madam Mayor, I nominate Becky Ayers and Matthew Pickman for the stakeholder Seventh Avenue, or from, yeah, stakeholder Seventh Avenue Municipal Service.
Okay, thank you. Becky Ayers and Matthew Pickman have been nominated for the stakeholder Seventh Avenue position. Are there further nominations? If not, then we will go on to the three-year, five-month term. Stakeholder of the Main Street D, the recommendations are John, Ryan, and Corneille. Anyone like to make a nomination?
Madam Mayor, I may, may the John Ryan, Chris Corneille, and Madam Seventh Avenue say would be.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Carolyn Gunther and Carol Sitzer.
Things were, are not in the same order that, that I had it here. Sorry about that. Three-year, five-month for the Main Street, Carolyn Gunther and Carol Sitzer. Am I, that where we're supposed to now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, sorry about that. We had a little different, different order. Would anyone like to make a recommendation?
And then I have nominated Carolyn Gunther and Carol Sitzer for the three-year, five-month Main Street stakeholders.
Okay. Thank you. Carolyn Gunther and Carol Sitzer have been nominated for Main Street stakeholder. Are there further nominations? Hearing none, then we'll go to the two-year, five-month Seventh Avenue, and that's where I was before. The recommendations on Ryan and Chris Corneille, if anyone wants to make a nomination.
Madam Mayor, I nominate John Ryan and Chris Corneille to fill the two-year, five-month
Thank you. John Ryan and Chris Corneille have been nominated. Are there further nominations? None, we will go on. Next, excuse me, sorry. Two-year, five-month Main Street stakeholder, two, five, okay. Matt Johns and Jared Bellman have been recommended. Would anyone like to make a nomination?
Madam Mayor, I know that we appoint Matt Johns and Jared Bellman to the two-year, five-month Main Street term.
Okay, thank you. Matt Johns and Jared Bellman have been nominated for the Main Street stakeholders. Are there? Okay, if not, then we will go on to the next, the one-year, five-month Main Street stakeholder.
Madam Mayor, I nominate Mark Pavo.
Thank you, you got ahead of me. I appreciate that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's all right. That moves it along faster.
Okay.
Okay, Pavo has been nominated for the Main Street stakeholder one-year term. Are there further nominations? Not, then we have an appointment for a city council member?
I'm not a mayor, I'm not a vice assistant.
Okay.
Madam, I nominate Lindsey Simpson.
So Councilwoman Simpson has been nominated. Are there further nominations? Not, then we go to the, pointing someone to fill a one-year term representing the rescue mission as a non-voting liaison. Do we have an individual, or is it just someone? Oh, yeah. It's just a general statement there.
Madam Mayor, I nominate for the director of the Henderson Lawrence Mission, or there doesn't need to represent Henderson Lawrence. It's not going to be...
Okay.
Before we vote, we need to do the two vacant, or the at-large spots, too, right? They're not on our list.
There's two that we still haven't done, also.
Okay.
Large.
Yeah, we have Walt Slagel and Patsy Dupree.
Yes, they were not listed under our motion, but we will go back and do that. First, let's finish up the director of the rescue mission, or his resume. Are there further nominations? Okay, then we will go to the two-year, five-month terms.
Madam Mayor, I'm not a mayor, Walt Slagel and Patsy Dupree.
Madam Mayor, this is John. Before we vote, can I please make sure that we need both of those? I want to make sure that, is Jamie still on the line? Would you leave Jamie?
I'm asking her to unmute right now.
Okay, it does say two vacancies.
So we, okay, so both of those vacancies are good? They correct, you're both of those?
Ah, yes.
Okay, thank you, just wanted to make sure.
Walt Slagel and Patsy Dupree have been nominated for at-large, two-year, five-month terms. Are there further nominations? Hearing none, then there are one-year terms for at-large members. At this point, we don't have any recommendations. Does anyone have a nominee to those? Otherwise, we will take care of those at a later date.
Madam Mayor, those may need to be one-year, five-month, I think those are really one-year, five-month, one-year, five-month, yes, ma'am. It does say expire in June 22, which would be one-year.
The same, okay. Well, if no one has any recommendations for those at this point, we will fill those when we do have some recommendations. So we are ready then to vote on all of these nominees, and we will take a roll call vote on that. Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Ms. Hensley?
Aye.
Ms. Simpson?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. Okay, very good, we've got all of those taken care of. And the next then is the Animal Services Advisory Board Charter Amendment.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. First, I want to thank Angela, because she's really reached out and taken these advisory boards and committees under her wing to help them know what they need to do to comply with the open meetings law, and public records law, and in doing so, bring some consistency about how all of the city's boards and committees operate. And so the Downtown Advisory Committee that you just created, their bylaws and charter, and this bylaws and charter are very consistent. They're based on the suggested rules of procedure for small, works that is put out by the Institute of Government, and you'll have to blame any man or mayor for the length, but the intent is that, that they have a cookbook that they can go to to see, you know, if they, how do we do this? How do we advertise this meeting, or whatever? And so they, these differ in that they do incorporate quasi-judicial rules of procedure, because this board will hear dangerous law appeals. The primary difference in what, for the advisory board, the Downtown Advisory Board, and the Animal Services Advisory Board. And this, let me tell you, this is a gung-ho group, they're ready to go to work, this Animal Services Advisory Committee, they've met three times, they've already been trained, I trained them on quasi-judicial procedures, and they did a slot analysis at their last meeting, so this is going to be a very, they're, they're ready to go. So we ask that you adopt the amended charter and rules of procedure.
Anyone have any questions? Not discussion or a motion?
Madam Mayor, would City Council adopt the amended charter of procedure for the Animal Services Advisory Board?
Is there any discussion? Not, we will take a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Simpson?
Aye.
Ms. Hensley?
Aye.
And Mr. Miller?
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. Okay, thank you, we can get working. Yeah, it's the point where we are going to go into session. Who wants to make that vote motion?
I would.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I move the City Council into closed session at prohibited NC general statutes 143, that's 318.11813, to prevent disclosure of information that is privileged or confidential to consult with an attorney, a court by the public body, or to preserve the attorney's privacy, privilege, between the attorney and the public body, and to discuss and give instructions regarding the following matters. Hensley be City of Hendersonville, and City of Hendersonville be ayes and ayes.
All those in favor of entering closed session? Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Ms. Hensley?
Aye.
And Simpson?
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. So we are now in closed session.